Good evening, and welcome to the public hearing for Livingston Board. Livingston's only Board of Adjustment. Today is March 25th, 2025. If you're an applicant for a D or use variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exists, and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of the notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to our Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and West Essex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you'd like to address the board, please come to the front and use a microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Mr. Kenya?
Kenya, President. Okay, Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Ms. Sohal?
Here.
Ms. Khan is not here. Mr. Beer?
Here. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kenya, can you call the first application?
Absolutely. Okay. Block 601, Lot 8, 3, Hartstone Terrace, Application Number 2024-65-V, Prashant Kumar and Minakshi Shahay. Application seeks approval for the first and second floor addition violation of following sections. 170-87 BB2 habitable floor area, forty-eight seventy square feet allowed, fifty-one ninety-nine square feet proposed, three twenty-nine square feet variance requested. 170-87 CC2 habitable floor area ratio, eighteen percent allowed, twenty point four seven percent proposed, two point four seven percent variance requested.
Okay. And before we get started, I just wanted to make one announcement. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'll ask everyone for their brevity, and keep it moving, please, without getting into details that we don't need. Give us the facts, and we'll go from there. So, that's for everyone, not just you. Thank you.
You must have heard about my reputation.
Oh, boy.
There we go. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Keith Loughlin of the law firm Englishino Taylor on behalf of the applicants. This application was originally heard by the board at the January 28th meeting and carried to tonight to enable us to submit revised plans. My partner Derek Orth originally presented this application, but has a scheduling conflict tonight, so that's why I'm here. The plans have been revised to eliminate the two-story space in the living room and instead now propose a twelve-foot-high walls with a vaulted ceiling above. As a result, the new habitable area for the project was reduced from 2,130 square feet to 1,374 square feet. While variance relief is still required, this change results in a reduction of the applicant's habitable floor area and habitable floor ratio, as was previously read into the record. The revised plans contain the prior zoning table, so we will update accordingly during resolution compliance should the board look favorably and approve our application. With me tonight is our architect William Gentile, who will discuss our revised plans. And Mr. Gentile, I believe, was previously sworn?
Yes, he was.
So he remains so? Is that okay?
Well, just do belt and spindles. Do you swear and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Gentile, your qualifications were placed on the record last time as an architect licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
And you haven't gotten an email since that time telling you that that license has been revoked or rescinded?
Have not.
Have not. Okay. You've checked lately? No, you're okay. All right. Thank you. So Chairman, I would suggest, as Mr. Gentile has been qualified in the past, to accept him again in the field of architecture.
Yes, we can accept him as a field architect, as expert.
Thank you. Mr. Gentile, could you please describe the applicant's revised plans to the board?
The whole thing was to reduce the bulk that we had in the building. Two-story space in the living room. I've since brought that down. I've got twelve-foot-high walls in the living room with a vaulted ceiling. That eliminates the two-story space and actually lost something like 795 square feet out of that plan. The rest of it was still remaining as it is. As you can see from the drawing. This is an indication of what is now second floor, the blue. The bridge is the means of connecting the split-level portion of the house to the new primary bedroom on the second, really the second floor. The area in white in front of that is now a vaulted ceiling in the area of one-to-two-story. I have... So just to show this, the front remains basically the same as the original design. Unfortunately, this is the only piece of... This is the part that was actually modified, so that we have a just enlarged table and protection toward the rear. It's the same depth, there's still no change of area. It's just that we've changed the ceiling down to something that's more in line with what's desired for this variance. So this is a couple of shots of the interior just to show where how it's been reduced. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? I'll just make a quick note that I really appreciate you coming back and making these changes. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Regarding the height that you have shown is thirty-one feet or something like that. So did you do the average around the four corners of the house? How was the height calculated?
The height, because you can see that the... You can see all the elevations of the home. You see it's on a slight hill? It's on a slight hill. The highest peak is at, you can see it on this side of here. This is what I measured up from because this was even lower down here. And I'm addressing that height. Because this is an existing structure over this side. Is that... Is that answering your question?
Yeah, because looking at the elevations that you have, that height was not considered in the calculations. If that's the case, you may need a height variance, but I'm not sure.
Well, I think we were saying this was three, four feet below the height. How they did?
Yeah, looking at the, if you look at the elevations on page number A8, it's kind of hiding the height. Do you have the calculations for all the corners anywhere that we can verify?
I don't have them right now. I could probably get them if that's what's necessary.
I would say this, Mr. Shaw. This was not a variance that was called out. However, I would say this, that this is something that, should there be a violation of the height restriction, that would be definitely picked up in resolution compliance, and they would not be allowed to get permits, and their plans would not be certified by the building department because their only variances they're asking for with regard to floor area and floor ratio. You would look at the average height, and I think that's why they're... You know, when you have a grade, you don't, you have to take into consideration that change in the grade affects the height, and I think that's what Mr. Gentile is trying to explain.
Yeah, I don't know if there's going to be more testimony, or maybe this is for the attorney, but... And maybe it was covered prior to the adjournment. But let me first make a statement. It looks like you did a great job in bringing it down. It still looks great. Not that that's relevant, the aesthetics, but I think you did a great job. My concern is the... I'm missing what the reason is in terms of the land or the particular property, et cetera, to be able to go over. So I appreciate you brought it a lot down, so we're only over a little bit. But the regulations have a particular number that's a limit. So maybe I'm forgetting from last time, like, what is the particular reason why we should grant the variance? Even if you have the negative factors covered, why should, what's the positive reason that this particular property should have exceed the limit?
Well, basically, we've stayed within the footprint of the existing house. We've applied this ask for additional space for living and for family and the need for their own personal bedroom space, which is up in seventh floor. We've added a third bedroom over the garage, which is still at the low end, and therefore keeping the idea of the bulk down. But it's still reached there. You know, the residential need has still been carried with the rest of the...
So we didn't intend to call all other witnesses, but we do have the applicants here. If you would like testimony, more supportive testimony in terms of their, you know, their family and needs additional living space. And we think this is, you know, especially with the revisions, you know, doesn't impair the intent of the zoning.
Yeah, and through you, Chair, I'm sorry. But I believe at the last meeting, they went... I don't have those notes in front of me, but I do recall they went through that. They had a full presentation at that time. And I think at that point, the applicant attorney indicated that he wanted to take a step back because there were a number of comments at the time about the amount of the increase. You've got to remember, the original increase, I think, was... And I'm using round numbers here. But I think the variance on floor area was like a thousand square feet.
Above the fifty-nine.
And the original floor area ratio was around like five percent. So...
Five point four. Sorry, you have a good memory.
Five point four. So I think that's the point of why they want to come back tonight was to see if they could sharpen their proverbial pencils and rely on the prior testimony, but also listen to the board. I think they felt they had a number of comments, to be fair, at the last meeting about what they were presenting. Not that Mr. Gentile's designs aren't great, but I think that they were, you know... I don't want to put words into counsel's mouth, but I believe that was what the concept was.
And that's why we revised the plans to try and come into more conformance with your zoning. So that... We hope that answers that.
I mean, I'm still concerned, but I would like to hear what the other board members think. And it could be that was covered in the prior testimony. I don't recall that. I do remember that that was... It just wasn't even close. But at the same time, close is a factor along with some other reason that it should go over by a little bit. It can't be that everything that's, if you're close, you get a variance. That's not how it works. That's not how I believe it should work.
I got one thing. I just have a concern. See, on the lower level, you have the bedrooms. There's a family room, and there's obviously a separate access to that space from the exterior.
There's not going to be rentals, is that true?
Well, would they do that as a conditional approval? That there will not be a rental space or apartment?
I'm sure there would be.
Yes, we would agree to that as a condition. That's not what it's intended. This is just a private, single-family home. But we understand your concern.
They're just covering bases.
Yep, totally get it.
That basically gets access out to the pool.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments along these lines?
The set of plan that you submitted dated March 14th, 2025, I believe you still haven't updated the proposed zoning analysis data.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. No worries.
And should, and I covered it in the opening, but should the board look favorably, we will certainly update that.
That should be a condition of the approval, that we get that update.
And we would agree to that.
I had a similar comment about like the height because in the zoning table, the height is shown as thirty feet, but the elevation is thirty-one point three. Just want to make that is captured.
The height shown in the zoning table on the drawing is thirty feet, but in one of the elevations is thirty-one. I just want to make sure that you captured that. That's the allowed, yes. But I'm saying in the zoning table that you're representing as the proposed. If we can capture that.
Yeah, we have to update it. Good catch.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on the board? Does anybody want to make a motion? Oh, actually, do you want to close? I'm sorry.
No, we just think that, you know, with the revised plans, we, you know, we're excited about this application, and we hope the board agrees and sees the concessions that we've made to try and come into closer conformance and reduce the variances. Thank you.
Okay. And does anybody in the public have any comments? Apologize. Kind of jumped the gun. Okay. Now, does anybody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion subject to the conditions as discussed around getting the revised plans and the component of that not being eligible as a rental property. Motion to approve based on those conditions. I'm sorry.
I'll second it. Too late.
Okay, Mr. Horn?
Approved.
Mr. Kenya, yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, we need one more. Okay, Mr. Weisman?
Abstain.
Ms. Khan? She's not here, sorry. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kenya, if you'll call the next application, please?
I forget. Block 1,000, Lot 7, Seven Locust Place, Application Number 2024-78-V. Ail Allen, I hope I pronounced it right. Application seeks approval for the first floor addition and covered deck in violation of the following section. 170-97 C4 rear yard setback, fifty feet required, thirty-two point one feet proposed, seventeen point nine variance requested. 170-97 C3 aggregate side yard setback, thirty percent required, twenty-six point six four proposed, three point three six percent variance requested.
How you doing? Mr. Long, you plan on testifying? Okay. We're going to swear in first, then we'll take the... Do you swear and tell the truth for this zoning board tonight? So hope you got it. Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Ail Allen.
You've got to go by the mic, sir. You can sit. You just say...
Ail Allen.
Sit, be comfortable, relax. Sit. Okay. So through you, Chair? Mr. Long, you're going to be presenting your architect tonight? Yes?
I'm presenting for my applicant. My name is Ruchidhar.
Okay, that's where you win. Do you swear and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, you've got to move that mic closer or something because I'm not sure we're getting yet. All right, you just...
You do?
Yeah. Yeah, just like outside voice. Okay, can you please... All right, I'm not sure you did this yet or not, but can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Ruchidhar. R-U-C-H-I-D-H-A-R. I'm a licensed architect. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, Maryland, and my license is active.
Okay. Chairman? Can you just give us your education for the record?
I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture. I'm certified and I'm licensed in three states. I testified before various...
Zoning boards in New Jersey.
And your licenses are covered in good standing, obviously?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the zoning board. My name is Ruchidhar. I'll be going over the project first. I'll first describe the project. The subject property is Seven Locust Place, Livingston, New Jersey. It's in the R2 zone, Lot 7, block 1,000. My client purchased this colonial home. It's a single-family detached home he bought in 2020. It has three bedrooms, four baths, one office, and one car garage. We are proposing a side addition. I'll pull up the PDF. We're proposing a side addition, which is seven twenty-four square feet addition above the new garage. The new garage is about five seventy-three square feet. The maximum overall height of this addition above the grade would be twenty-six feet, six point five inches, and the exterior finishes would match the existing house, which is vinyl siding and board and bed siding, and the roof would be asphalt shingles. I'll go over quickly the two variances that we are requesting. It's a C-type variance. One is the rear yard setback. As per zoning regulation 170-97 C4, the maximum rear setback allowed is fifty feet. With our proposed addition in the rear yard, we are asking for a variance of seventeen point nine feet, thereby having a thirty-two point one feet setback in the rear. The second variance is the aggregate side yard setback. As per the zoning regulation 170-97 C3, the maximum aggregate side yard setback allowed is forty feet, which is thirty percent of the site area. The proposed addition would create an aggregate setback of thirty-five point five feet, which is about twenty-six point six four percent of the site. Hence, we are requesting a variance of four point five feet overall, accounting for about three point three six percent of the site area. The two key constraints for which we are asking for the variance is the lot shape and the topography. The property is situated on a shallow lot, which is irregularly shaped. It has a steep slope. It slopes from the back of the property to the front. It's about fifteen percent of the grade. And the unique topography, it creates a hardship that meets the criteria for the NJSA 40-55D, seventy C1 for a variance based on the side topography and the side shape. Currently, the client has only one car garage, and hence we are requesting this addition, which would have two car garages, and it would give him some space to park his second car. He currently parks it on the asphalt driveway, and that would be a good thing for him to have for during winter. All right. For the negative criteria, we don't see any significant increase in traffic because of this addition. No adverse effect on the property value. In fact, it would improve with time. The home aesthetics would match with the neighboring design. No detriment to the public good. We don't have, won't have the drainage issues. We have a civil engineer onboard for this project, and he would be taking care of the lots of his drainage plan before going through the permit approval. And in conclusion, I believe that the benefits, they outweigh any potential detriments. There's no substantial negative impact on the public good as, in fact, promotes the master plan goals for the town. I respectfully now request the board to look into this variance and grant for this modest addition. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? I have a question, what you guys are thinking. What's happening with the existing garage?
The existing is a one-car garage that would stay.
So this will become a three-car garage?
This will, yes. This, the two-car, the addition would have the two-car on that level, yes.
The existing is really, it's really old and very small.
It's a very small car garage.
Mini car garage.
Is it, is it legal? Is it legal, the garage?
I'm sorry?
Is it too small? Is it, is it undersized?
It's not as big, but yeah, it's hard for him to park, and that's what he has. And I believe one-car garage is like the bare minimum for the zoning to allow.
No, I'm just, I was just wondering if there's anything that was gonna happen to that garage or not, if that's gonna become part of the living space or, or not, or?
No, that would stay the same. In fact, uh, because of the three-car garages now, as per the town regulation, four-fifty is what they don't consider in the habitable area. We have added that third car garage into the habitable area.
Okay.
Because it's, it's above four-fifty.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, no problem having that as a condition of approval, the garage stays as a garage?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
How, how wide is that garage, the new garage? How wide is that?
I believe they take out the, uh, the floor plans.
Put it with a one.
Uh, overall, it's twenty-three feet three inches by twenty-six feet eight inches.
I'm sorry, how far, how, how, how wide?
Uh, the width is twenty-three feet three.
Twenty-three.
Overall, including the block.
You gotta stay near the mic. You can swing it around, you can take it out.
Twenty-three feet three inches is the width. It's on sheet A one-point-oh.
Anybody else have any questions on the board?
Through you, Chair, I just wanted to, um, one of the things that, uh, the architect noted was that there would be an engineer who would, um, properly design this and build it in accordance with current standards for stormwater control. You'd agree with that as a condition of approval that the engineer will conform with all local, state, federal regulations with regard to stormwater control?
In fact, uh, his, uh, preliminary drawings are as part of the whole set in the zoning, but he is going to, yeah, to have the drawings for the surface drainage, lots of his drainage.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody on the board want to make any statements? Does anybody in the public want to make any statements? Uh, does anybody on the board want to make any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Young, one. Mr. Sherman, two. Mr. Kenya, yes. Oops, sorry. Did the wrong one. Hang on one second, sorry about that.
Lot of pressure.
I'll get fired one day. Okay, Mr. Kenya, yes. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I got Mr. Sherman, Ms. Young already. Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Uh, optional, not available today. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Block fif- uh, fifteen-eleven, lot eleven, Four Maplewood Drive, application number twenty-two-five dash six dash three, Rodeck Builder LLC. Application seeks approval to construct a new single-family residence in violation of the following sections: One-seven-zero dash nine-nine-C two, front yard setback forty feet required, thirty-three feet proposed, seven feet variance requested. One-seven-eight-eight-seven-C C four habitable floor area, thirty percent allowed, thirty-five-point-nine-nine proposed, and five-point-nine-nine percent variance requested. Thank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. John Barberula, on behalf of the applicant, I have, uh, Aman Sadr for the architect to be sworn by counsel, and we will be brief and direct.
That's a lot, a lot of promises, John.
I got the memo for the colored tie, but I can't, I can't do one of those.
John, after the meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll have a seminar on bowtie teaching.
I, I got a good one on that.
Right. Do you swear a firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please, uh, oh, Chairman, through, sorry, qualifications.
Yes.
Aman, could you please?
You can do your job, it's okay.
Aman, you have been previously sworn by this board. You're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Yes.
And your license is still good since the last month we were here. Is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
You, you also didn't get any memos or anything that says that you didn't pay your dues.
Yeah, I didn't get anything yet.
So I'd like you to direct your attention to, uh, two things that the board is always very concerned about. There is no staircase access to the attic in this particular site. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The only stair we have pulled down is stairs from the second floor to the attic area, and, um, we are applying for a floor area ratio variance, uh, where our number is three-thousand-one-twenty-nine, which is thirty-five-point-nine-nine percent, as opposed to thirty percent. And, um, also, I would like to mention that, uh, the foyer, we have a ninety square feet counted twice in the foyer, but it's only used once at the first floor because it's a two-story open foyer. Uh, this is a typical single-family house where we have the living spaces at the first floor with the guest bedroom. Um, the basement is completely open with another bedroom, and the second floor hosts the, all the bedrooms and bathrooms and closets.
And because Livingston requires you to count the vaulted ceiling, that's where we get the extra ninety feet as part of what we're asking for, is that correct?
Yes, yes, correct.
Since you've all had plenty of opportunity to review these plans, and you've had seen his plans on many times before, I think those are the areas that you would like to hear if I o- open his testimony for Mr. Sadr to answer any other questions you may have in reference to these plans?
I have one question.
Sure.
On the basement floor plan, in the rec room, there's four square boxes with an O in the middle of them?
Uh, th- these are steel columns for the structural support.
So they're going through that rec room, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Please come forward. Yeah, right there.
Oh, right here.
Yes.
Hi, Barbara Draculich, twenty-seven Felswood Drive, Livingston. My questions have to do with, I wonder what the reasons were for the setback from the, uh, to move closer to the road?
That's not this witness, but, uh, if she wants to come back when we have the planner.
Yeah, the plan, the planner will testify to that.
Okay.
So this is just what he testified to, which is the, the, the house, the style of the house, and stuff like that. And then, when the planner goes, he'll describe the lot and everything else.
Okay, thank you. Then I will sit down until the planner comes?
You'll, you'll invite you back up.
So if you want to sit right there, you're certainly, you're more than welcome to ask the next witness questions.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? Okay.
And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have my planner sworn.
All right, do you swear a firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Graviano's, uh, qualifications?
Yes. Yes, my name is Nicholas Graviano. I'm a planner and partner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners with a business address of one-zero-one Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey.
And your license is still in good standing, correct?
Yes, it is.
You have retained to ha- to review this property and to look at the positive and negative criteria. You also have just heard of, uh, a particular member of the public took, wanted to talk about the front yard variance. Uh, although it's called out as a variance, uh, could you give an explanation of how Livingston treats that?
Certainly. I, I'll just, uh, get right into the testimony, address the two variances that the applicant's requesting this evening. The applicant is before the board for a specific piece of property known as block fifteen-eleven, lot eleven. That's a street address of Four Maplewood Drive. The applicant is requesting relief from two separate sections of the township's code this evening, the first being for the habitable floor area ratio, whereas thirty percent is required, and the applicant is at thirty-five-point-nine-nine percent. Uh, the applicant is also requesting the front yard setback variance, although I think if you read the letter of the law, the ordinance, it's not really a variance that's required, but it is interpreted that way, uh, here within the township. Uh, the applicant is requesting thirty-three feet, whereas, uh, forty feet is required. Um, the applicant's request for the front yard setback, uh, when you go for the allotment in the R-four district, it allows you to average the lots within two-hundred feet. In this scenario, lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen average thirty-two-point-five-six feet. Uh, so that is why the applicant is proposing thirty-three feet, because it's within the zoning, uh, ordinance allowance for a reduced front yard setback. So the applicant is actually within compliance for the front yard setback that's being, uh, accommodated this evening. I, I would like to note that this is an undersized lot. Uh, the subject property contains slightly under eighty-seven-hundred square feet, whereas the zone district requires nine-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-five square feet. So essentially, the lot size is seven-point-three percent smaller than what's required by ordinance. However, the applicant is only requesting an increased habitable floor area ratio of fo- five-point-nine-nine percent. So, the ratio between the decreased lot size and the FAR request is actually, uh, on the conservative side. I would also like to note that the proposed dwelling is under the maximum habitable floor area, whereas three-thousand-two-hundred-twenty square foot is permitted. The applicant is at thirty-one-twenty-nine, so it's a hundred square feet less, and when you look at the ninety square feet that was described, uh, in the architectural testimony, it's essentially a hundred-and-ninety square foot less than the, uh, maximum habitable floor area. Uh, looking at the FAR variance, as the board knows, uh, the FAR variance is akin to a conditional use variance, in that the applicant must demonstrate, uh, that the site can accommodate the proposed dwelling, given the increased habitable floor area ratio request. In this case, the applicant is meeting all applicable s- yard setback standards. That's front yards, side yards, and rear yards. Additionally, the applicant is adding a stormwater management system to a site that doesn't presently have one today, and the applicant's proposal, when you look at the before and after condition, is only adding five percent impervious coverage to the site and is adding that increased stormwater management system. So, the site can certainly accommodate, uh, the proposed dwelling with the increased FAR. Uh, looking at the positive criteria, this proposal certainly meets purpose A, promotion of public health, safety morals, and general welfare. That's done through building a new dwelling, uh, conforming to modern construction and engineering codes. Additionally, promotes purpose G to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens, and then the impeccably designed building and site promoted desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. Uh, looking at the negative criteria, there's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The proposed dwelling is under the maximum habitable floor area requirement, and it provides the stormwater management system. Uh, looking at the requested front yard setback, uh, request, it certainly, uh, could be granted under the C-two criteria advancing purposes of zoning A, G, and I, as given in the FAR variance request, with no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Submit the testimony, and I, just to reinstate, zoning always calls out the front yard variance, but you, our testimony shows that the other lots, as testified, that this is in keeping, and I just wanted to point that out, and no problem for the person to come back and now ask these questions. This is the person he, she should ask.
The, um, exhibit that's on the screen, I believe, was not submitted, uh, before tonight, so we're gonna call that Exhibit A-one for the record, and if somebody can then please provide that to Ms. Hollis, um, tomorrow, uh, through an email.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Exhibit A-one, uh, rendering.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
Um, the site plan that's submitted, uh, shows a covered porch going from the left side of the house to the stairs, uh, but that was not reflected in the rendering.
The porch is here, yes. The, the entry porch?
Yeah, I have a, another document which shows the porch.
The cover porch is, is covered with kind of like a balcony on top.
Okay. So what, so the, the thirty-three setback is to the facade of the house, right?
To the facade, not to.
And then you're able, you're, you can violate up to six feet from the facade into the front yard. What is that distance that you're violating with the porch and the steps?
I have six feet. So the six feet is within the...
You have six feet for the porch or porch and steps?
The porch, to the porch, not without the steps. So the porch itself is six feet going out from the wa- from the house wall.
I believe it's porch and steps, right? Should be six feet. We can clarify that.
The steps is not covered.
Correct, but I think the steps can violate. The entire thing has to be six feet if we can clarify that with the...
Okay. If I could chime in, on, on the plans here, you're showing thirty-three feet before, to, to the house, excluding the porch, is what I'm seeing on the plans. I think that's different than you're saying now. Is that correct?
Correct. What I'm trying to say is that the facade is at thirty-three feet.
Oh, okay, he's acknowledging that, okay.
The porch is, porch is encroaching six feet.
Encroaching six feet into the.
But the steps are beyond the porch. So the, the allowed zoning, um, setback is only six feet. It's, if it's more than six feet, I think we should, we should just double check what that ordinance requirement is.
I'll double check it, and if it's not that way, I'll bring it back. I'll, I'll send it back.
Sure, okay, thank you.
We'll stipulate that for the record. We'll check it. If it ha- if it has to be pulled back, we can pull it back with the, uh, interim there.
So, Mr. Barberula, this, you're saying for a condition of approval, you're saying for a condition of approval, the applicant will comply?
With the, with the municipal ordinance, because you're allowed six feet. If it's six feet, not counting the steps, then it's okay. If it's not, as the member said, then he has to pull it back to get rid of those steps. So it'll have to be brought in, and we agree to that condition. Because I don't, I don't particularly know that. I haven't looked at that ordinance, so I don't want to make a commitment. The architect does this all the time, and we can, since the member brought it up, we will double check. And if it requires it, we can modify.
Right, it's not actually part, there's no living space above it. It's just an appendage that can be modified.
And that's why, that's why most municipalities have the, you can add that, and you see this particularly in, in shore communities. Your setback is to the facade, and then they allow you to put steps out to the, to the ground, especially un- under the change with the height, when everything had to go up because it's sandy. So, see that all over this southern Jersey. But we would, we go comply as a condition.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Ma'am, would you like to come back forward? Of course.
My name is Barbara.
Is it right, should I, can I address what her question was, or?
Maybe her question has changed, so let's hear what Barbara's got, the young lady is saying.
The first one was addressed by our planner. The other lots all have, have exactly the same distance.
Fair enough, fair enough.
But you, we never stop a member of the public from asking questions, so I'll ask your second question.
Okay. My second question actually comes from a concern that I have about persistent flooding behind, uh, Four Maplewood. That is, meets my backyard on twenty-seven Felswood. The flooding happens after hard rains, snowfalls, and it pools actually more on Four Maplewood and twenty-nine, my pardon, my neighbor next to me, pools for several days after hard rains. So now, I'm hearing that you are installing a storm management, water management system, and I'm wondering, was, was that the reason for that, to ameliorate? and I'm wondering, was, was that the reason for that, to ameliorate that flooding that does stay for several days behind on the back end of the pop property?
All right. I can address that this way. The municipality in the development ordinances concerns itself with the development of any kind of redevelopment house, that it has to be addressed. So the positive, this drainage wasn't because of a certain aspect. It's a, it's a, it's a city, citywide, or in this case township-wide ordinance, but what we're doing here is positive drainage, so that this condition will be addressed by our engineer and as part of this site plan. This particular house that is being taken down had nothing there, and that's why you probably had a problem. That what you should know is that the municipality is looking out for, for your neighbors and yourself by requiring anybody that does this kind of work to address drainage, and that's what we are with this particular site.
And may I ask, where, where will that exit? What, at what...
That I don't have the expertise, and that is controlled by the engineering department of Livingston. So that you'd have to wait until the plans actually get building plans and site plans, and then that would be determined. That's a couple of months from now at least.
Okay.
That's not something that we have, nor is it in front of the board.
When I spoke to engineering about the, the problem, and they recommended that I come tonight, and if I had any photos to show what's happening, I did bring a photo board that shows those flooding instances, and they said it shouldn't exit to the street, that I should make sure that...
Well, the only thing is, I don't know why they told you that, because this board does not, does not hear that aspect, only engineering. So I can tell you that this is a very responsible builder, and they will comply with all of the regulations for drainage.
I should have prefaced my comments that, to say, I'm delighted that something is going to be done with the property. I hope it needs it.
We always, we always like people from the public to end that way. We may have been even more, it's a pleasure to hear you talk as you started it, but I always like to get...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's our application. We have nothing else.
Okay. Does anybody else in the public have any questions? Does anybody on the board want to make any statements? Does anybody in the public want to make any statements? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion to approve, that is?
Motion to approve, yes.
With the conditions that were stated. And we'll be written down in the resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Horr?
Yes.
Mr. Canyon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I can actually put down, a lawyer told you to do this. Short.
That's true. What, what time is it, and what date?
At this time, I'll come with a different time. Yeah, really. Everyone have a great day.
Take care.
The next application, Block fourteen oh nine, Lot Two, Fifty-three North Livingston Avenue, application number twenty-two-four dash sixty-nine dash V. Pardon my pronunciation, is Fnu Mohammed Salim. Application, applicant seeks approval for an addition in violation of the following section, one seven zero nine nine C three, site yard setback ten feet required, eight point five feet proposed, one point five areas requested. One seven zero eighty-seven C C four, habitable floor area, habitable floor ratios, pardon me, thirty percent allowed, thirty-one person proposed, one person variance requested.
Okay. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Salim, I'm just going to swear in. Do you swear firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I do, thank you.
You look a little like deer in the headlights. It's going to be okay. Don't worry about it. Okay. And you have your architect with you tonight?
Yes.
Why are we...
Does anyone know which folder I brought in?
Okay, while we deal with that technical issue, let's get you sworn in. All right. Do you swear, do you swear firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My first name is Afshan, A F S H A N. Last name is Vandal, V A N D A L. My office address is two Thirty-nine New Road, Persipaly, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture. I have a master's degree in architecture. I was in front of this board in the January meeting, and I've been in front of quite a many boards around New Jersey.
And you too have not received any emails, correct?
No emails.
Good. We don't like those.
Thank God.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Thank you. Let me bring up my plans. So we are here for two variances. Habitable floor area ratio required is thirty, and we are at thirty-one. We're requesting waiver for one percent. And site setback and required is ten. We are at about eight point five. We're requesting one point five feet waiver. I'm going to go over the, the, the design of the, you know, the expansion. Basically, I was hired to add much needed, the, the, the owner is going to actually explain a bit more on that later, that they required a bedroom on the main floor due to many reasons, family situations and all. And the second requirement, I'm just going to go over really quick to, to my, to the design. The mouse doesn't work very fast. So basically, the existing first floor did not have a powder room, much needed, always. It, it had a really small, not small, but the kitchen was kind of not big enough for the homeowner, and no family room. Existing living room has been used as a family room, and, and they, they require like a little family area other than the formal living area. But the main request by the homeowner was they wanted to add a bedroom. And, and that was, they explained to me that they have a family situation where, where they may be, they, they have their parents visiting very often, and, and the lady of the house, her mother, is already with them at this point. So, so they are expecting them to be needing a bedroom. Currently, they are having trouble going up and down. However, they're still in good health. It's not, they are not there yet, but they are anticipating that they would, you know, require a bedroom on the first floor in a, in a few years. So they are, they, they want to go ahead and construct it at this time. And, and then, since we don't have a powder room there, we, we added a powder room, and we added a full bathroom with a guest room. And, and we just relocated, in order to provide the family room, we relocated the kitchen, and, and as everyone wanted, there was no island. And, and everyone would agree that all, all new houses or expansions, they want an island there. So, so, so that's, that was one of the reasons, they just want to relocate the kitchen on the side, so that's away from the mainstream, and they get a little more entertainment area. They have a big, you know, family and friends in town to, to have space for them to, you know, for the holidays and to get together. And then the, the laundry is in the ba, in the basement, and they want to relocate that because that was really also causing problem going from the second floor to the basement, and then up on the second floor, we are not changing at all, and there's like no room at all for, you know, on the second floor to have a laundry. So, so we, I proposed a laundry for them off the, like, next to the kitchen and off the dining area. Now, the reason we have the two variances, we have a couple of hardships at this point, which I'm going to go over. The lot area is much smaller than the required lot area in this zone, and, and, and the lot configuration is varies. It's really narrow in the front and wider at the back. And, 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 and the third condition that actually generated the side yard setback was that the existing house is very close to the right side, if you're looking towards the house, to the right side property line. And, and the design, we didn't want to like really squish it, so we just wanted to the, the homeowner, and, and I suggested that the new expansion should be, you know, just an, a line with the existing house on the right side, and then expand towards the back of it. However, the side yard setback, since the property line on the right side is skewed on an angle, we get that bottleneck only for about ten to twelve feet. And as soon as we clear that ten to twelve feet, we get the required ten-foot side yard setback. And, and the one percent overage, I would attribute that to the smaller size of the lot. And, and, you know, reducing that one percent was going to really make a lot of difference to the, to the size of the kitchen, size of the bedroom, and actually the bathroom, and then powder room, and the required closet that they, because they have a side entrance, they wanted another closet next to that entrance. So that dictates that the depth of fifteen feet that we are going towards the back of the house. And, and that is creating like a one-foot overage on the, for the floor area ratio. Had the lot, of course, had the lot been of a regular size, this, none of these variances would have been there. And that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for this witness? So you're, basically you're saying these are just some de minimis...
Minimum, yes, yes.
Overages, one percent here?
Yes.
And your square footage is still way under the allowable?
Let me add one more thing to this. The front of the house does not change at all. So when you are driving, you know, on the street, you don't even get to know that if it, it is any impact of this expansion to the street, or to the neighborhood, or to the neighboring, you know, properties.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm the neighbor of Salim. I live in Fifty-One North Livingston Avenue. They're joining house. Also, I own the property Forty-seven North, which is also another house on the same line. I have a question for the witness here. Could you explain elaborate about the house, the line, the side yard? You were saying it's already skewed. Can you explain what is skewing the price?
Yes, yes. Let me just show you, let me just enlarge the site plan. See this side property line, the, the property is actually narrow on the street side, and, and, and it is wider on the back. So this, this particular property line on, towards the right side is going on an angle. So that is actually, if it wasn't, if this was a regular rectangular lot, we wouldn't have that problem. And if, if the house was not built that close to that property line, we wouldn't have that side, side yard setback problem. Since the, the actual house was built way too close, whatever time, they allowed it at that time, whenever it was built, it was very close to the property line. However, the skew is actually working in our favor as we go back towards the house. And, and as, within, even before the main expansion starts, we have that ten-foot clearance.
Right. So how much is the skewing? What is the distance between the houses before? And will it further skew it?
See, the original, we, we didn't change the property line. The property line is there.
Yeah, not property line.
We didn't, we didn't change the house location. The house is there. We're just aligning the expansion with the existing house. So, so if we look at right in the front, the, the, the front part of the house is only six foot, six feet and nine, six point nine feet away from the property line. So, so this is an existing condition that we could not really change.
Six point five feet, you said?
Six point nine.
Six point nine.
So, so that's an existing condition that is determining where the, you know, where the expansion is going to be, and that is causing this minor, I would say, very minor side yard setback variance.
Yeah. So my, my, I don't have a concern in that. The concern is, will it still look even more congested than what it is?
No.
It's on the main street.
No. The, 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 the side setback currently is more congested. So, so even before we, we go to the actual expansion, if you see this ten-foot dimension, we, we get the required setback at that point. So, 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 so the actual expansion of the house does not have that problem of the side yard setback.
And it's on the side of Fifty-Five North Livingston?
Yes.
Where the skewing is, right?
Yes.
We talked about this.
Yes.
Okay. So just want to make sure there is no further skewing. We still are in the laws.
No, we, we, we can't skew the property line.
Not the property lines, but...
And, and we are not encroaching, encroaching into the existing side yard setback any further.
Yeah. And did you consider building over the house, or just this?
We, the requirement was that they needed a bedroom on the first floor. So, so it would defy the purpose of the expansion if we had done it on the, on the second floor.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the public have any questions for this witness? Please come forward.
Good evening, Board. Hi, so I'm their neighbor. I am in the back of their house, and I am the owner of the property, which is Five Bell's Wood.
Hold on, your name?
Sakshi Agarwal.
Can you spell that?
Yes. S A K S H I A G A R W A L.
Thank you. Continue.
So I have a question, and basically trying to understand how this extension of the house that you're requesting, has there been any study done with how this will impact the property values of the houses around? Because that area, you know, there are just, houses are very close, and with the extension of this property, which is of course outside the zoning law, which maintains the balance and the aesthetics of the neighborhood, I'm just curious if there's been any study that's done which shows how this extension could affect the property values for the neighboring houses.
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to intercede on that one, because that's not a factor before the zoning board. The zoning board only applies the zoning ordinance. So anything with regard to taxation, property values, even, even though we talk about aesthetics, aesthetics aren't a determining factor. So they're not required to do that part, to do any type of study with regard to property value. So just to, you know, let you know what the board's jurisdiction is. So that's why they don't have to provide it. Not because they don't want to, it's because they don't have to, and it's not requ, not a, not a factor before the zoning board.
Got you. Just one more question, and, yeah, just one more question. Is this extension in any ways going to lead to this property being used for any rental use in the future, or this is just for the personal family use?
For the personal...
Okay. Okay. So, yeah. So as long as, yeah, there is no rental ambitions to rent it out, because it's a pretty crowded area already, and it can lead to more overcrowding and street parking issues. Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Board, and thank you, witnesses.
Thank you so much. Anybody else have any questions for this witness? Do you want to add anything at this time, or you're good?
No.
Okay. Does anybody on the board want to make any statements?
I'll make a statement. Given that you have a, a smaller lot, then... Given that you have a, a smaller lot than the standard lot, I appreciate the effort that you put in the design by keeping the existing side setback at, don't encroaching in the existing one, also by keeping the 10-foot at where your main expansion starts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna make any comments? Anybody in the public wanna make any comments? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion to approve. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Yan said it, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, board.
Okay, block 2101, Lot 1512, Orchid Lane, application number 2024-71-3, Louis and Susie Fernandez. Applicant, applicant seeks approval for the first floor addition in violation of the following sections. 170-98 C2, front yard setback 50, 50 feet required, 40.06 proposed, 9, 9.99 feet variance requested. 170-87-87 BB3, habitable floor area, 3520 square feet allowed, 3654 square feet proposed, 134 square feet variance requested. 170-87 CC3, habitable floor, floor ratio 21% allowed, 23% proposed, 2% variance requested.
Hi there.
Hi, good evening.
All right, so Ms. Fernandez, right?
Yes.
Okay. You swear affirm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Fernandez, can we please have your name, state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, Susie Fernandez, F-E-R-N-A-M-D-E-S. I can sit, okay.
Yeah, relax.
S with an S at the end, not a Z.
Okay. And you're the homeowner, correct?
Correct.
All right, and you are presenting your architect tonight?
Yes, Jose Gennaro.
Okay, so let's swear in your architect. You swear affirm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Jose Gennaro, G-E-N-N-A-R-O.
And?
And I'm a licensed architect and planner in the state of New Jersey. Both of my licenses are current. I've been doing this for over 30 years now, so testify in front of several other boards. I don't remember this one, but, you know, several, like Westfield, Union, Hillside, Mountainside, Long Hill.
And if you just give us your, your, will you get your education?
Sure. I, I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from NJIT, and I have my license for about 30 years now, architecture license.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Okay, so I'm gonna start by sheet pre-three of three, which shows the floor plans. My client lived in, in this house for several years. It's a split-level style home. So we have three levels on the house. We have the lowest level, which contains the garage, an office, and the family room, and laundry room. And then we have the second level, which is four bedrooms and two bathrooms. And then we have the living level, which is the area that we're proposing an addition for, that has, currently has a living room, a kitchen, and a kitchen dining room combined. So she has everything in this house except for a separate formal dining room. The way it is now, it's just one big kitchen with a table that it's a little tight. So we're proposing an addition of a dining room next to the living room, and we open it up to it. There's also an existing fireplace, which we're proposing to make a two-phase fireplace, so they can see it on, from the dining room and the living room. And then next to the kitchen, we're proposing a walk-in pantry, and a butler's pantry, to serve that new dining room. The variances that we're requesting are the floor area ratio and the habitable floor area. Unfortunately, we, we're doing this, we went over, we were pretty close to the max, so we went into the, over the area. Also, as far as the front setback, we are asking for a front setback, but we have the 40 feet required, and we're not changing that front setback with the addition. We're staying within the same line, which is 40.6, I believe.
Ms. Fernandez, sorry, Ms. Fernandez, Mr. Gennaro?
Yes.
You indicated that you, you were also a licensed planner?
Right.
Okay. So in your capacity as a planner, and as far, checked your email, your license is still good in New Jersey as a, as a planner, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
In your capacity as a planner, do you have an opinion with regard to the variances requested by the Fernandez's on the FAR and the, and the floor area?
Right.
Do you have a?
Yeah.
Opinion on that about, you know, negative, positive criteria?
Okay. I wasn't too prepared for that, but I can do it. It, it's basically the, where the addition is going, it's on the left side of the house, which has the, the most land. We still have, in fact, I'm trying to enlarge this. I'm not that good at this. But maybe, maybe I'll look, look at this. Okay, so we have, the habitable maximum floor, habitable floor area is 3,052. We're proposing 3,0654, which is only about 130 square feet in that end. And then the habitable floor area ratio, we're about 2% higher at 3,0654, when it's 3,0281 is what's allowed. So going back to the addition on the, the left side, we are lining up the house, we continue the same line of the house, same materials, match. And we still have 24 feet and a half from the, the addition to the side property line. So we feel that this doesn't affect, does not detriment, and, and any of the neighborhood. We feel that it's an enhancement, enhancement to the house, and we try to, very hard to try to make it as part of the house, and that is an addition, and so I'm not seeing a negative criteria. It's gonna provide a, a space that my client is looking for, and it needs in this house. So, you know, I think.
Ms. Gennaro, the, the, the additions, I think you identified, the additions are a dining room?
Yes.
A pantry, and besides the?
Butler's pantry, you call it.
Butler's pantry, right.
Right, right, right next to the dining room.
So, so none of those involve bedroom spaces or, or bathrooms?
No.
So there's no, there's no expansion of the property that would result in expansion of number of, of persons at the site? The number of bedrooms remains the same?
That's correct, yes. Yes. Like I say, it's just an extra, she really wants to have a formal dining room where people can gather and not, in the kitchen.
Mr. Gennaro, do you know if the, the lot size for this particular lot is?
Yes.
You meet the, you meet the current lot area, correct?
Yes, it's 15,625 and 15,000 square feet is required. We're a little bit over the, the minimum.
Anybody have any questions? I have one question. In the, again, you're talking about bathrooms, right? So you see there's no bathrooms. Is there any additional plumbing in the butler's pantry? Is that going to have plumbing, or is that dry?
No, dry, no plumbing.
So there's no plumbing changes to the home?
No, we're not proposing.
You would agree to that as a condition for approval? Okay? Thank you.
No problem.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I just wanted to know, what are the constraints for this variance that you are applying for?
What are the variances?
Constraints. Why are you applying for this variance? What are the?
Well, because we are very close right now with the floor area ratio. So by adding this dining room, it brought it in into, you know, 2% higher than what it, what it's required. And also the floor, the habitable floor area, according to our calculations, you know, that's where we are. And as I say, we're keeping all the, the rear setback, the front setback, the side, we're still in compliance, and, you know, so those are the, the only two factors that we have, the, the areas.
So to piggyback on Mr. Shaw's question, and just I wanna understand, just wanna understand you correctly, Mr. Gennaro. You're saying currently, the property un, with, with, in its current condition?
Right.
Is, what is it in terms of the habitable floor area ratio without the addition?
Okay. Habitable floor area right now is 3,236. 336 square feet, yes. And allowed is 3,0520.
And then, do you have on there, and I apologize for not looking at your zoning table, but the, if I'm looking at your zoning analysis correctly, it indicates that your existing habitable floor area ratio without the addition is 21%?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so it's at the current ma, the current maximum allowed?
It's correct, yes.
So, so any, any, would it be fair to say that any addition to the property would generate the variance for the floor area ratio?
That is, that's right, yes, that's a point, yes.
So regardless of the underage, I think Mr. Shaw's question, I don't wanna put words into his mouth, but I believe that Mr. Shaw's question was, what is the current condition versus the, the, where you're ending up? So on the one with the habitable floor area, you're under, but with the habitable floor ratio, you're at?
We're right at.
The, the, the maximum. Mr. Shaw, does that help you answer the question?
And we came up with 14 by 18 size that would fit her furniture and all that for the dining room. You know, I mean, we tried to make it, you know, tight as we can, you know, because we, we realized that we were over.
Does anybody else have any questions on the board? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Anybody on the board wanna make any statements? Please.
Let's make similar to the last, I, I just, I, I have a problem with there not being positive criteria on this. I realize it's close, and I want the work to be done, but that, that would be my concern.
I'd like to hear from anybody else on the board if they have the same concerns. Or different? Anybody? Are you quiet today? All right, does anyone wanna make a motion? I'll make the motion to approve, subject to the condition of the butler's pantry, and no additional, no additional plumbing is required for the addition.
Well, we're gonna say, nope.
Go ahead.
The, the representations made at the board, that this is going to be, as indicated, dining room, pantry, but, the butler's pantry, but no bedrooms or bathrooms are presented.
Fair.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya, yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Abstained.
Yes?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Yep. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries to prove. Okay, the next one. Block 39 of 3, Lot 112 dot 05, 15 Cornerstone Way, application number 2025 dash 3 dash V, Ocean Huang and Zizhu Huang. Application seek approval for 20 by 20 deck in violation of the following section. 170-98 C4, rear, rear yard setback, 40 feet required, 20 proposed, 20 variance requested.
Good evening.
All right, let's get this one in. Do you swear affirm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you gotta get closer to the mic, and just state and spell your name for the record.
Yep, first name H-A-O-T-I-A-N, last name Huang, H-U-A-N-G.
Okay. And you're gonna present the plan?
Yep. So, hey, good evening.
You're the, you're the homeowner?
I'm the homeowner, yeah.
Okay. Go for it.
Yep, good evening. Name is Hao Tian Huang, I'm homeowner of 15 Cornerstone Way. So I'm here for day, today for the wear plan, back, the side back variance application. Our house right now has a 40-foot rear yard setback, which is the required minimum by code. We currently have a 10-foot deck, which is extended into the rear yard. We want to rebuild the, the whole deck and make it larger for a few reasons. We want more space for our kids. We are family of four, and we just welcomed a second baby. He, she'll be one, one month old tomorrow. We are moving from Jersey City to Livingston next month. So right now, we are doing some renovation. A second reason, which is the main reason, is our backyard is a slope, so it makes it harder to use the space. So making a bigger deck actually will help us better utilize the, the, the whole area. And then we also think our backyard is only connect to our neighbor's backyard, so we don't think a bigger deck will actually impact our neighbor's will or, or this space. So right now, we are, we are actually requesting a 20, 20-foot variance to the backyard, to the rear setback. We have, we have a 10 right now, and the required minimum was 40. So yeah, basically, that's it. It's, we hope the board can grant the variance, and I believe the bigger that will be very beneficial to our family.
Okay, thank you. And this new deck is gonna, does it sort of align with the decks and the other properties adjacent to you?
Yes.
So you're not sticking really any further out into the backyard than your neighbors?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for this witness? Is anybody in the?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep on missing you. Sorry. I'm always down yonder.
I'm hiding here at the end.
The guy down there.
So, looking at the, the land, the, the land behind, directly behind your house, it looks from the landscaping like that land belongs to the house all the way on Northfield. Is that correct?
So we, we only have a 40-foot setback, and then behind that was the backyard of, of the neighbor, which is on Northfield.
The Northfield neighbor, right.
Yes.
Just wanted to confirm that.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I'd point out to you, because having visited it, that there is, right next door, there's like a retaining wall, et cetera, that comes out to about where his proposed deck is.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Yep. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody in the public have any questions? Would anybody on the board like to make any statements? Anybody in the public like to make any statements? Would anybody like to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya, yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes, and I'd point out for the record that this lot is, is a shallow, it's an irregular shaped lot for this.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome to Livingston. Good luck with the baby.
Block thirty-eight eleven, lot twenty-one ninety-eight Amelia Avenue. Application number twenty-twenty-five dash five dash V Ricardo Atida. Applicant seeks approval for the second floor addition in violation of the following section. One-seven-zero dash ninety-nine C two, front yard setback, forty feet required, thirty-four point zero-three proposed, five point nine seven feet variance requested.
Hi there. How are you? Good.
Okay, ma'am, do you swear firm to tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and can you please state and spell your name for the record? And you're the property owner? Okay. And you have tonight with you your architect?
Builder.
Builder.
Okay.
Yeah.
I should.
I couldn't last that long in school, so.
Well, some would say some of those guys end up as attorneys, so. Do you swear firm to tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Anthony Perotta, A N T H O N Y P E R R O T T A.
All right, and even though you're not an architect or an engineer, you're the builder, but why don't you just give us a little bit about your background and then you can tell us about the project through your chairman.
I'm a custom builder from Roseland. We predominantly do additions and this is my first zoning appearance. I've never done this before. I usually let the homeowners fend for themselves. So yeah, this is my first time.
We'll try to be gentle.
Yeah, luckily this is, I was like, I thought I didn't even need to come to this, I thought this was pretty easy. Basically, the existing front setback is thirty-seven feet from the front yard setback. And I think the, the zone is supposed to be forty, so we're already non-conforming. The home has been there for quite some time. And we are proposing a two-foot-six-inch cantilever over the first story, which is now increasing our front setback to about thirty-five feet instead of forty. And that second-story cantilever is still not projecting past the roof of the portico. And that's all I got to say.
Short and sweet.
The end of the day, right, end of the day?
You're essentially building straight up except for the overhang. Overhanging two feet to get a little more room, but just trying, going straight up. Are you not going at any over on the side?
No, sides flush, rears, rear is not protruding past because the first floor goes past. It's got a vaulted ceiling, so we're not going past the rear setback. Second floor on the right side's flush and on the front aesthetically pleasing, gain two feet, cantilevering over the first floor. But the portico roof is still projecting past our new plan by, I think, a foot.
And the attic is not a usable attic, correct?
Correct, it's gonna be used for mechanicals for the new addition.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
Quick question. So your cantilevering about thirty inches. How comfortable are you that, with that structurally? Because, you know, twenty-four is where we would like to see typically.
It's, so I believe it's two-foot-six inches from the inside of the wall. So it is two.
It's from the interior face and not the exterior face.
And the new walls are two, two-by-six walls. So it's five and a half with drywall, six inches, yes. But that was on the architect that did that.
Anybody else have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody on the board want to make any statements?
Yep, I'll just note that this is an undersized lot, pretty small compared to the minimum.
Thank you.
And the only other thing that I'll add is the addition will just add some architectural detail that'll actually, instead of the boxy nature of the house that is now, so it'll be more aesthetically pleasing than what was there.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, I hope so, you're paying for it. Does anybody in the public want to make any statements? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, approved.
I'll second it.
Second, Dr. Sherman. He should come more often.
I might, yes.
To the point, Mr. Kenya, yes, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Beer?
Yes.
I got a guess from Mr. Weisman, that was good, thank you. He noticed I was here the whole time. Yes, thank you. We're good, all right.
Okay.
Those are one for one.
Block forty-one hundred, lot forty-one-one-five Hillside Avenue. Application number twenty-twenty-five dash two dash V. Robert Gian Duso. Applicant seeks approval for the second floor addition in violation of the following section. One-seven-zero dash ninety-eight C two, front yard setback, fifty feet required, forty point seven proposed, nine point three variance requested. One-seven-zero eighty-seven I, one garage den is required to be converted back into garage space.
There we go. Do you swear firm to tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, I swear to tell the truth.
And please state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Gian Duso, G I A N D U S O.
All right, Mr. Gian Duso, you're the owner of the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, through you, chair?
Sure, you're up.
All right, I mean, we're just requesting a variance of four point seven feet for a front yard setback. It's a pre-existing condition in a non-conforming lot. We are not changing the setback, we're just leaving where it is. I mean, that's really all, we're keeping it nice and short for you guys. We're doing the second floor there and that's it, I mean.
And, and so you're, you're also asking to, you're converting the den back to a garage?
Yes, yes, because we're doing the family room and then the den is gonna be back to a garage, the family room is being moved.
Okay, so at one point in the past, there was a garage?
Correct, yes. Yeah, it's just sheetrocked in TV, it's nothing major, you know, it's easy to put back.
Are there any, are there, when it was converted from a garage to a den, did you place any bollards or any, anything structurally to prevent cars from driving into it?
Yeah, well, it was there when we moved there, so it was just, the garage door is there, but there's like a piece of sheetrock over it, so we need to convert it back.
Okay, so was, when you, you bought it without the garage?
Right.
Okay.
I think your question was going to, the interior space is completely open, though, there's no additional supports that would prevent a car.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, it's the same.
Drive through the sheetrock and you're good.
Yeah, yeah, you could put it by tomorrow if you really wanted to.
Are you gonna drive through or?
Open the garage door.
And the garage is still there on the exterior.
Yeah, the door is still there. We're gonna make it professional.
And otherwise, you're adding the second floor?
Correct. And we're building behind the setback actually, it's just that where the existing bump out of my house is doesn't conform. So it's weird.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody on the board want to make a statement? Does anybody in the public want to make a statement? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, new people. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya, yes, Mr. Horn?
We haven't finished voting yet, wait, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
She's catching up to the builder, they go build it.
Hey, man, oh, man.
I heard a few yeses, I was like.
Anybody's changing their mind, let me know.
Well, yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Here's your chance. Okay, Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion absolutely carries.
Okay, now get out of here.
Block forty-nine oh four, lot twenty-nine, Sixty Hobart Gap Road. Application number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty dash V. Sixty Hobart Gap Road LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in the violation of the following sections. One-seven-zero nine-nine C four rear yard setback, thirty-five feet required, twenty proposed, fifteen variance requested. One-seven-zero eighty-seven B B four, habitable floor area thirty-two twenty square feet allowed, thirty-four fourteen square feet proposed, one ninety-four square feet variance requested. One-seven-zero dash eighty-seven C C four, habitable floor area thirty percent allowed, thirty-eight point five proposed, eight point five variance requested.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi there, Mr. Sheppis, how are you?
Nice to see you, I thank you that you recognize me. For the record's purpose, my name is Steven Sheppis, I'm the applicant's attorney, may I be seated?
Please be comfortable.
Since there's no objection, I'll sit. Okay, well, as the, as it was appropriately read into the record, I represent the applicant entity, which is the property owner. We're seeking variance relief and furtherance of construction of a new single-family dwelling on the subject property. I would note that there are three non-conforming conditions which will be eliminated as a result of this proposal. Presently, there is excessive building coverage on the property. The building itself violates the front yard setback, we're proposing a conforming front yard setback. It's about seventeen feet too close to the front property line and we're proposing a conforming setback of forty feet. And also, the house that's on the property presently violates the side yard combined. So we're eliminating that, those three non-conforming conditions and those conditions will be brought into compliance with the ordinance. The property is an undersized, irregularly shaped lot. The benefit of this particular property is that immediately to the north and to the east is municipally-owned open space, which helps offset the deviations that we're proposing this evening. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce the project architect, John Babula. Mr. Babula prepared the plans, I'd ask to be sworn and then briefly state his credentials on the record.
Swear firm to tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
It's Jonathan Babula, J O N A T H A N, Babula, B A B U L A.
All right, very good, Mr. Babula, I stated that you were an architect. Could you briefly state your credentials on the record as far as your licenses and your education as an architect?
I graduated from NJIT in two thousand and four with a bachelor's of architecture. I received my license in two thousand and fifteen. I have been practicing it for about twenty years now and I've had my own firm since two thousand and fifteen. And my license is in good standing and current.
Okay, I offer Mr. Babula as a licensed architect.
Thank you, does anyone on the board have any questions, objections regarding this witness? There being no objection, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Very good. Mr. Babula, you prepared the plans that are subject to tonight's proceeding, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And were your plans based on a current survey?
Yes, they were.
And what was the date of the survey or when approximately was it prepared?
In March of this year.
Okay, why don't you briefly describe for the board and the public the improvements that are on the property as relates to zoning compliance as it presently exists and what's proposed and zoning compliance as far as the proposal is concerned?
Sure, existing right now is a two-story dwelling with a one-story side addition on the right side, the, and a detached two-car garage towards the rear. The, there are violations with the existing house. It is non-conforming in the front yard setback and in the right yard setback. And it is also over the allowable building coverage.
Okay, and those are noted on your zone table?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So as part of this proposal, is it fair to say that all of the improvements that are on the property today would be demolished and removed?
Correct.
So let's talk about what's proposed and what various, what variances are required in order to effectuate the proposal.
We are proposing a new two-story dwelling with a two-car garage. It's a more modern kind of colonial-style house. The variances that are, we are seeking is a rear yard setback and the habitable floor area and the habitable floor area ratio.
So do you have a rendering that shows what this house would look like?
Yes. On the last sheet, page A four point zero, seven oh seven, this is a three-D perspective of what the new dwelling would look like.
Okay, so let's talk about the structure itself. Presently, the property doesn't comport with the building coverage. Will this proposal comport with the building coverage requirement of the ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Okay, now let's talk about the height. Will this proposal comport with the height both in stories and feet?
Yes.
Okay, so let's talk about the internal layout briefly, if you can tell us what's inside the house and how the, the home would be suitable for this property and/or compliant with what's out there in the neighborhood.
Starting with the first floor plan on sheet A three point one, which is five oh seven. We have a, you walk in the front door, you have a two-story foyer. To the right is a guest bedroom suite with its own bathroom. Behind that, we have a powder room. To the left of the foyer, we have a two-car garage. And as you move to the rear, we have an open concept for an open kitchen into a family room. And then behind that, there is a formal dining room and a more formal living room.
Okay, now you have extra lines on there which basically showed the dimensions, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So the house itself is just a dark perimeter that we see here, that's kind of like a rectangle with a L bump out on the front?
Correct.
Okay, what about the second floor?
Second floor, as you come up the stairs, again, to the, the right side, we have a smaller bedroom suite with its own bathroom. To the left, we have a primary bedroom suite with a walk-in closet and its own bathroom. Laundry room to the right, and then there's two normal bedrooms with a Jack and Joe bathroom to the rear.
Now, Mr. Babula, can you tell us, in order to make this compliant with these coverage requirements as far as habitable floor area and habitable floor area ratio, how much of the house would have to be eliminated?
About ten feet from the back, across the back, which would be about three hundred square feet.
And what would, what rooms would you lose as a result?
We would lose the dining room, the formal living room, and about two bedrooms upstairs.
Okay, now, have you been out to the neighborhood to see what other type of homes have recently been built in the neighborhood?
Yes.
And how recently were you out there?
This week.
Okay, and could you tell us, based on what you see here on your rendering and this floor plan, have you seen other homes of this nature, like in the same zone within a block or so of this house?
Yes, the two side streets, Meadow and Crescent, there are newer homes there that are very much in line with this new house here.
Now, how does this house fit into the square footage that you would see on a home being built here in the, in the zone, that you see out there presently?
Those newer homes that I looked at look to be about comparable to this, this square footage here for this.
Okay, I don't have anything further, Mr. Babula. And we do have a planner.
Okay.
Yeah, so he'll address all the other issues.
Anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? Please.
So the, the new drawings will have the garage built in and everything, right? Because the old, old one had the garage outside.
Correct, the, it was a detached garage, but from the first floor plan, yes, it is an attached two-car garage.
And Mr. Babula, so everybody's clear, that very large garage in the back is being eliminated and it's gonna become lawn?
Yes.
And that's how you get the increase, the decrease in coverage?
Yes, that's right.
Excellent. And the attic is accessible by a stair?
It'll just be a pull-down stair mainly for storage and HVAC.
It won't be used for any, any, any use?
There's no walk upstairs to that, to the attic.
No problem.
Cousin it.
Yeah. We can add that to the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Please, thank you. Okay, any, please.
And, and while not necessarily relevant, but for context, is this a builder buying or an existing Livingston resident? I can't even ask.
Never mind.
Never mind, no, it's wrong.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just to be on record, what is the clear height for the attic space?
It's, to the peak, it might be about ten feet, eight to ten feet. I don't have it with me, but it is a tall attic up there. But again, there's not, there's gonna be no set of stairs to access it besides a pull-down stair.
Now, Mr. Babula, yeah, just, just so everybody's clear, you did that in order to add architectural flavor to the building rather than having it to be suitable for occupancy?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody in the public want to ask any questions? Okay, your next witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Babula, your testimony is concluded. All right, our next witness is Peter Steck. Mr. Steck is a licensed professional planner. I'm gonna ask Mr. Steck come up and be. Sure, why not? Be sworn and then briefly state his credentials on the record.
Do you swear firm to tell the? Do you swear affirm tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Peter G. Steck, S T E C K.
And through your chair, qualifications?
Yes. By education, I have a bachelor's in civil engineering, a master's in city and regional planning. I was licensed in New Jersey in nineteen seventy-six, and I still hold that license.
Okay, have you ever testified before this board as a licensed professional planner?
I have.
Very good. I offer Mr. Steck as a licensed professional planner.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness?
Did he check his email?
There being no objection except for checking of email, the witness is accepted as expert in professional planning.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Steck, I see you're tromping at the bit. You have an exhibit in your hand. Is that fair to say?
Uh, yeah, I'm an old-school guy, so I have paper here.
Paper is okay, I think, for now.
We'll call this A one?
Can I interrupt? Sorry. Can I interrupt? Sorry. Can I interrupt? Sorry. Can I interrupt? Sorry.
Yes, so Mr. Steck, I'm going to ask you to hand out, and then we'll have it subject to connection. You have an exhibit this evening. We're going to identify it as exhibit A one. And perhaps you can tell us how many pages is, consists of page of A one, and what we see, maybe go walk us through. Yes. 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 Yes.
I think we got the gist of it, so if you, if you don't mind, we can understand what you're applying for. So thank you. I think we got the gist of it, so if you, if you don't mind, we can understand what you're applying for. So thank you. I think we got the gist of it, so if you, if you don't mind, we can understand what you're applying for. So thank you. I think we got the gist of it, so if you, if you don't mind, we can understand what you're applying for. So thank you.
Uh, the end. Uh, the end. Uh, the end. Uh, the end.
The end. The end. The end. The end.
Yes. Yes.
And what we see, maybe go walk us through.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
What I'll do is just identify A one, and then when I testify, I'll refer to the different pages. And this was prepared by me, and it's dated yesterday. And is, are we short one or does every one? What I'll do is just identify A one, and then when I testify, I'll refer to the different pages. And this was prepared by me, and it's dated yesterday. And is, are we short one or does every one? Yes. What I'll do is just identify A one, and then when I testify, I'll refer to the different pages. And this was prepared by me, and it's dated yesterday. And is, are we short one or does every one? Yes. What I'll do is just identify A one, and then when I testify, I'll refer to the different pages. And this was prepared by me, and it's dated yesterday. And is, are we short one or does every one?
I do. You did the study. Thanks for doing that, the, of the, the ratios in the neighborhood. Did you also look into the square footage of these neighboring houses?
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Okay, very good.
Um, I, I did. One of the problems I had is that I didn't, I only looked at the total square footage from the, the internet on the, on the assessor's survey. I did not have a diagram to show, you know, did they include the garage or not include the garage. There's, um, let me pull out my notes.
At least on that wall, it is conforming. It fits within the setback. It has a minimum more than the 10-foot minimum. But as you can see in the diagram, it does punch through the rear. And again, I think it's plain looking at it that one of the issues is simply it's an irregular lot. And the back line starts coming closer and closer to the road frontage. Of significance in terms of evaluating the rear setback is the fact that behind this is publicly owned land. It's going to be open space as far as I'm along around because it's it's on the state Rossi list. And very hard to remove this land from it. The other variances have to do with your definitions of floor area and floor area ratio. And the building is larger in square footage than is permitted. My understanding is the board treats this as a D variance requiring five affirmative votes. And a little background in justifying this is that normally when floor area variances were developed, they were never used initially for residential. They were mostly for offices, industrial uses. And the reason is they accurately measure intensity. If you have an office building that has twice the floor area than permitted, you're going to have twice the amount of traffic, twice the amount of people, et cetera, et cetera. With single-family dwellings, it's not twice or it's not proportionally more than the floor area. It's still 10.1 trips per day according to the RSIS. What I'm getting to is that when you apply a floor area ratio to a single-family dwelling, the real issue in my mind is one of aesthetics and blocking light air in open space. You know, does it violate the setback requirements because it's so big? How would how are the aesthetics in terms of fitting this in with the neighborhood? And I would suggest to you that although this has more floor area than permitted, it is common that with new construction, household needs are different. You need more closets than you had in an older house. And I believe this house, it was in the 20s if I remember the date of the dwelling, clearly doesn't meet modern living standards. And so I think the way to address this is while it's going to require five votes, and this is under the Coventry case, I have to address what problems arise from having more square footage than the floor area ratios permit. And in my view, the problems potentially might be ones of setback and aesthetics. But in this case, we're violating the setback only in the rear of the property, which is remote from other houses. And again, it abuts the open space. When you look at this property from the front, it is purely conforming. It has the right setbacks. It has the right height. In fact, there's a benefit now with the driveway because right now in the driveway, you have to back out into Hobart Gap Road. And this will allow you to do a K-turn, which the county certainly likes. So you don't have to back out into the road. And from the closest abutting owner on the west, at least on that facade of the house, it is an acceptable depth. It has an acceptable height, acceptable setback. So with that in mind, I think there are several. So this is one of the D variances because it's a floor ratio. And in my opinion, there are several purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced. I'll talk about purpose A and G, which are related. A is talking about encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state. Clearly, single-family house in a single-family zone, but a substantial upgrade to meet modern living standards. G talks about providing sufficient space in an appropriate location. And again, although they violate the rear yard setback, we're next to guaranteed open space. So there is essentially no negative to that. We also, in my opinion, because we're pushing the house back, and that is the most visible part to the public, we are providing adequate light air and open space. And again, we're reducing the impervious coverage on the property. One of the purposes of the municipal land use law that dovetails with your ordinance master plan goals is to promote a desirable visual environment. As you can see from the rendering, this is a handsome house. I think it reflects some of the newer houses that are built in the area. It again has more square footage than is permitted. But in my opinion, because of the unique situation here where we abut open space, a paper street, anyone riding down the street is not going to know that there's a 50-foot right-of-way next to us. It's going to look as part of this property. It both insulates other properties. And again, I think it compensates.
Can I interrupt? Sorry.
Yes.
I think we got the gist of it. So if you if you don't mind, we can understand what you're applying for. So thank you.
The end.
Okay, does any one on the board have any questions for this witness?
I do. You did the study. Thanks for doing that of the ratios in the neighborhood. Did you also look into the square footage of these neighboring houses?
I did. One of the problems I had is that I didn't. I only looked at the total square footage from the internet on the assessor's survey. I did not have a diagram to show, you know, did they include the garage or not include the garage. There's let me pull out my notes. There are some houses that are there's some heavy larger floor area ratios. Again, partly because they're smaller lots. There are some houses that hit, I'll say, the low 3,000 square feet. As you know, almost without exception, the newer houses are all larger. They're in the high 200s. Some of them break through 3,000 square feet in floor area. This is slightly larger. But in my opinion, because of the unique circumstances, being insulated by open space, that's going to be imperceptible. It's as indicated by the architect. It's like chopping off the back 10 feet of the house. And again, that, in my opinion, doesn't really offend anybody from a land use point of view.
I have a question. So I visit the site. Looks like the house will be torn down because you're moving the new house to the back.
Both yeah, both the garage and the house will be completely demolished.
What's the reason? Is there any reason that prevents you to stay like within the HFA? Like, what's the reason that you have to go beyond the 3220?
It's well, it's beyond the 3220 by, I think, 194 square feet, if I recall from the denial letter. It's possible, obviously physically, to do that. But in my opinion, this, you know, this applicant and through his architect wants to meet modern living standards. The strongest argument I can tell you is if you use the Coventry standard, you know, the issue is what are the negatives that arise from that 194 square feet? And because of the unique circumstances here, I see zero negative impact. There is no house behind us. There's no house to the side. They're going to appear as the right-of-way to the side of us is going to appear as part of our property. So it'll make our property look larger. The applicant can obviously shrink the house. But in my opinion, just to accommodate modern living and the fact that in this instance, when you look at the house from the front and from the other side with the left side, where there is another house, it looks to be 100% conforming. So the strongest argument I can offer you is that there are no negatives at all from approving this. And I think that addresses the Coventry standard because that's that's what the test is. You look at the overage of square footage and you decide is there some? You have to address the negatives that arise from that extra square footage. I don't see any in this instance.
I have a I got a few questions. All right, first question, Fisher Drive. I understand it's a paper street. Can't see how long it is. And I understand it borders the two township Rossi land properties, correct?
That's correct.
Has anybody approached the town to ask about vacating that street, considering most of it would stay as Rossi and the front would obviously half would go to this lot and the other half would go to Lot 26?
I have not. I'm not aware of that. But what I would suggest is that while, I guess, potentially it could be vacated, because it's part of sandwiched between two Rossi properties, I think it's especially valuable because of that.
Yeah, just from my experience dealing with the Rossi in other places. I don't know how this was submitted, but I'm pretty sure that as Mr. Stack was saying, that because it's sandwiched between two identified Rossi lots, that more than likely, even though it's listed there as a as a as a paper street, it wouldn't be allowed to be vacated because more than likely on the Rossi, it would show as being exempted. Okay? So even though, in essence, even though they never did it officially by vacating the street, by virtue of putting it on the Rossi, it served to basically take that street away. It's there, but the Rossi effectively makes it annulity. So there's nothing to really vacate. And I think the town would have difficulty with the D. And that's not the people you want difficulty with.
Okay, that's one question. So the lot, I understand what you're saying about the to the right, you have the obviously the street that the vacated, well, the street that doesn't exist. You have the Rossi property behind. But the size of this house, looking at it from the front, compared to the adjacent lots to the left, would definitely be a larger size house compared to the other three neighboring houses, correct?
It would because the lot at the setback gets wider and wider. But the my point is that it's substandard today and it will be conforming. And again, we're taking advantage by pushing the house back 40 feet. But to me, there is a significant benefit that comes from that in terms of car maneuverability on a fairly busy street.
And the last thing that I have is I know you say, I think, what is it, 194 square feet, right? Above the above the 3220?
Above the max 3,200.
But in reality, you know, yes, but you're also because of the ratio, you're going from what would be allowed, which would be 2664, let's say.
It is definitely larger, although again visually, because you were splitting it between two stories, you cut that in half. But you know, there's no getting around it. We exceed the maximum. But again, what I think is unique here is where this property is situated, plus the irregular shape. I don't see any negatives that would arise from this. And it's a fairly unique situation, in my opinion.
Mr. Stack, I'm going to ask you a question. Before tonight's proceeding, you and I were discussing the appellate division holding in Pullen versus Planning Board of South Plainfield Township and how the appellate division found that a board could justify variances of this nature based upon the overall improvements presented by the project. Could you just touch on that briefly and maybe just highlight for the board the benefits associated with the deviations that we're proposing and the redevelopment of the property in its totality?
Yeah, the focus, again, part of the justification for the floor area ratio is the fact that there are other variances that are being diminished or eliminated. And what that case said, that Mr. Shep has interrupted our dinner with, is that you look at all of the benefits that arise from it, not just from the floor area ratio. You look at what benefits arise. And having a new house, again, a vote of confidence in the neighborhood, one that's in a visual setting, busy road, you know, woods across the street. If you I think if you look at the whole picture, it's it comfortably meets the Coventry standard.
Now, Mr. Stack, you have some pictures of what's there on the property. Which page is that on those pictures?
Well, I have the overhead view on the first page. But on pages two, three, and four, I show the character of the surrounding area.
So in that photographs on page two, you show the house, which is 17 feet from the front property line, the oversized garage and a couple of accessory structures sitting out there. And based on what you've proposed or what's proposed here this evening, can you tell us whether, in your professional planning opinion, that what's presented in the way of the new house would represent an improvement from a planning standpoint as compared to what's lawfully existing today?
I think it would. Again, it's a highly visible location. And I'll just repeat, when when you look at it from the street as being proposed, it's 100% conforming. And when you look at it from the closest dwelling on the west, it is conforming there also. And again, the the concern would normally be where I'm intruding on the rear lot. But the answer is that's guaranteed open space.
So is it fair to say that this is a very unique situation in which the board can utilize or rely on the fact that this property has dedicated open space, both to the east and to the north, that would ameliorate any concerns as to quote unquote overdevelopment?
So any variance, you again, can't be generic. You want to look for something specific. This is not only has specific attributes, but I suspect there's no other property in Livingston that has this constellation of factors.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness?
And when I would agree that it's unique. But what I'm trying to grapple with, it's. And I think probably most on this board would agree, a nice new home like this, and it looks very nice, and this would be a great addition. But we do have this maximum limit. As you pointed out very, very well, the master plan even recommended that we increase it. But to my knowledge.
The master plan didn't say what they wanted to do. But they they what the master plan said is we know that our R4 zone doesn't quite align with the existing pattern of uses, and we ought to take a look at it. So all what I'm saying is that it's while the master plan didn't say, you know, increase the floor area ratio, it recognized that there's kind of a misfit between the existing pattern and the standards. And I think that suggests that this application can be approved without substantial impairment of the master plan.
And putting aside the substantial impairment, because I'm trying to find the positive factor. Where my concern is, especially when we're where, which is great, that they're getting rid of, we've all seen it, getting rid of the the structures that are there and putting a brand-new structure, which is great. But how if we approve this, how do we justify that anybody, any new house that goes up in an R4, how would we ever, you know, reject that house, that new house if they are if they also go over by a little bit?
So let me just put let me just put that into context. We judge applications on on each application as they come. But if I can just twist that question a little bit. What would, if I can, Mr. Stack, and I think you kind of said this, but if you can give us the the coup de grace on this, what would be the unique factors for this site to convince this board that the habitable floor area ratio and have a floor area more the ratio is is that the site conditions here are of such condition that that variance can be granted? I think that's where Mr. Weissman is going here is what what about this? More so than another hypothetical site out there? What makes this make you render your opinion?
So several factors. Number one is, as I showed, this is in a neighborhood where the vast majority of lots are substandard in area. So that kind of aligns with what the master plan observed, that there's a kind of a misfit. Here are the factors that are unique to this. Usually, when you're studying a variance application, properties tend to connect across the street. You know, how does it look? Because that's where people connect. Across the street, there are wetlands and open space. There'll never be a house there, number one. So it's a one-sided street. Number two, this is an irregular shape. It's clearly addresses, I think, the rear yard issue. But a unique factor is that we abut guaranteed open space, that you're not going to know where the lot line is. But visually, that paper street is going to look like part of this property. And you, I think you take into consideration the variances that we're improving. We're eliminating a non-conforming side yard. We're lessening the impervious coverage. We're pushing the building back so it'll be conforming in the new location. I think if you take those all together, this is truly a unique piece of property. It's Horn Book Planning to say there are no precedents in this game. Every property is unique. But that constellation of factors, in my opinion, suggests that there isn't anyone that's going to come in and say, me too.
I just have one, just just one question. I know the fact that the property borders on the open space on both sides. I understand that and nothing will be there. And it looks like it's their space and there's the woods and whatever. The one thing that I, one of the concerns that I have is that the house where it was before, as crappy as it was, was 17 and a half to 18, about 17 and a half feet away. Now you're moving it 10 feet to that to the to the one neighbor. I get wanting to keep the lot conforming. But with all those arguments, wouldn't it make more sense to then say that due to the open space, that the house should be almost pushed all the way to the side lot line? So that way, because nothing could be developed there? And and move it away from the neighboring house so it's not so close?
Well, it's not close to the neighboring house. It's it meet it's the minimum setback is 10 and we're doing 11. And and the other thing is that you you want a house to have a yard that you can use also. And there is a benefit to pushing it back because now you have some maneuvering area for the driveway.
So I would interrupt and make this one statement. This was a thought that we had earlier, and I actually had discussed this with my client. And should the board prefer to see a greater separation on the western side of the property, it would require some variance relief. As you can note, the lot line is not perpendicular to the road. So it is skewed. So you have 20 feet in the back corner and 11 feet in the front. So if we did slide the house over to some degree, we could potentially increase the side yard setback on the west. So that is a possibility should the board find that desirable. I would imagine that we could accomplish at least four feet and bring that setback to 15 feet and decrease that on the side to the east, thereby providing greater separation. So if that would be desirable, we could certainly accomplish that.
That'll decrease your backyard, though.
The backyard doesn't. I mean, the backyard doesn't matter. There's just there's woods behind it. You're not impacting anybody. That's that's my point. I just think it just looks very congested then on the left side.
We could accommodate that. If you want to slide it four feet, we'll make that 15 feet and then reduce the other side. I mean, you know what? That's probably why the house was originally sited 2.96 feet from the easternmost property line in order to provide for greater separation. So it's not as though that that's a condition that's unknown to this property. So we'd still be providing a greater separation than exists today.
Yeah, it would lessen the rear setback, but it would open up more of the rear yard toward the northwest corner.
So if the board prefers, we can agree to slide the house over to the east, providing for a 15-foot side yard setback on the westerly property line.
Wait, so wait, yeah, this is okay. This is what I want to clear up. So if that, you know, once again, this is why I should have paid attention in school and then I could remember these numbers. But if you slide the house, I'm looking at Mr. Stack's page six. So we're all looking at the same thing. If you slide that house over from the left by four feet, so now it's a 15-foot setback on the left, I think we would agree that the front right corner of the house would now be past the setback line to the side. And now you would have a left side from the street, left side, right, no, right side, excuse me, right side variance of four feet. Would you agree? And in your in your notice, I assume that you did. Oh, yeah, I knew you would. You included any any other variances, correct?
And I also note that the plans could be modified during the course of the public hearing without further notice. And look, the fact that it's municipal property next door, to me, it's a no-brainer in light of the fact that there's no negative impact.
Right, and as I said before, the fact that the I think I think if the board, there is a paper street there, but I think the proper way for the board to consider that property next to it is that it's dedicated open space. It's not going to be developed ever. Once you're on the Rossi, you can't get off the Rossi. Or at least it's incredibly difficult from my recollection. So if the board were to go that way, just I just want everybody to understand you're creating a new variance where one where none exists at this point. And you're not eliminating any variances by moving it over. Just I understand Mrs. Sherman is saying, but I just want everybody to be clear that by moving the house over, you're creating variance and you're not eliminating a variance.
Although from the existing condition, it is still an improvement because the existing condition is three-point.
Yeah. I like the boarded-up house. It's got a certain aesthetic.
1313 Mockingbird Lane.
Yes. And no, no, Steve, no one gets that anymore. I use I use I use that at my office. Nobody gets it. They don't even they don't even understand what cursive is at my office. All right, so all right, just just for clarity here. Mr. Sherman has made that request about shifting the house over. Is it the applicant's representation that they would that they would amend their plans accordingly by shifting the house over to the right by four feet? And are now requesting a right side setback variance of four feet on top of the other variances that we already have? Well, rear, yeah, well, rear yard is already violated. Rear rear yard.
It's going to reduce the rear yard setback a little more because it's skewed.
Right, but it will it will still be there. Right, so the actual number for the rear yard setback will be less.
It would be approximately 15 feet rather than 20.
There you go.
But then again, it's backed up to open space.
If there's a tree line or anything, you will not be able to cut the trees to increase the depth of your perceivable back rear yard. So you would be restricted with the fifteen feet or so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a good idea, whatever my opinions were.
Anybody else have any opinions, plus or minus? I take no exception either way.
I would, yeah, I would leave it the way it's shown, rather than shift the house. We are violating, uh, anyway, and then why increase another variance?
I, I agree. I agree. We can just keep it the way it is.
It was a good idea.
That just goes to show you, what do I know?
The, the main reason is that they, they're conforming on the left side anyway, so...
Understood.
And, and the right side, so...
I guess you could shift it over about a foot and still not violate it.
Exactly. Instead of eleven feet, you make it twelve, but still...
A little more, right? Ten percent.
Yeah, but, but even the way it is...
All right, so we'll move it, move it over so you hit ten foot on the right side, wherever that lands. It won't be exactly a foot, but...
Okay, but that would, I believe, decrease the rear yard setback by maybe a foot.
Right. Is that good for everybody?
Yep.
Kind of a, all right.
And just, wanna be clear, that, that, that by, by moving it over, there is not going to be a right-side variance triggered. And you're not, that you're not asking for that relief tonight.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good.
But the rear area would go down, because...
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. I just wanna, I, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to clear up the one, I, I just need to clear up the one side.
But we can just keep, we can just keep it the way it is. It's even sound on eleven and eleven on both sides. It looks better. It's more conforming.
We could do that, too.
You get the exact even space on both sides, but anyway, that's my opinion.
Let's take the foot, take the foot.
Leave it to the discretion of the board.
Let's set in the middle. It takes six inches.
All right, right down the line, preference, leave it or move it a foot, go.
Leave it.
I say take it.
Leave it.
Move it.
Leave it.
Leave it.
I say leave it, but I still have issues with the size.
Okay, all right.
It's not moving.
Phew, that was exhausting.
Okay.
Anybody wanna make any comments? Besides the position of the house?
I do.
Yes.
I appreciate that you correct the, uh, the bulk, um, standards by, you know, keeping an even separation and move the house back to meet the front yard rear, um, setback. And then I recognize the Rossi land behind will have no negative impact. I mean, will be not, will not be an actively impact by reducing the rear yard setback. But I still feel that, um, for a brand-new house to go up, you, I respect your professional opinion about the no negative, but I still, I'm not convinced that, um, this new house has to be, um, exceeding both, um, area and floor ratio. That's my opinion.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I concur with that opinion, even though I think that the improvements are great, and I acknowledge that. I just feel like those exact same improvements could be accomplished and be great with a thirty-two hundred and twenty square foot house in that location. That's just my opinion.
Anybody else? You have an opinion? Anybody else have an opinion? Okay, um, would you like to make a closing statement?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. Uh, first, I wanna thank everybody for their time and consideration, and this was a thoughtful exchange. And, uh, you know, the reason I brought up the Pullen case with Mr. Steck is that the appellate division specifically found that the positive criteria for these type of variances is justified by the vast improvement that one would have. Now, you may say to yourself, well, why can't you make it comply? Well, there are factors involved with regard to this type of redevelopment. I mean, this doesn't happen because my client enjoys buying tired old houses and then transforming them into these, uh, new homes that people in the neighborhood could be proud of as they pass by and they see this. So, when you ask yourself, well, what's the positives associated with this? You have to take a look at page P, uh, two, and then, uh, P three, and imagine what's there now compared to what's proposed. Now, this evening, I drove through the neighborhood, and I went up, uh, the side street, Meadow, and then, um, um...
Crescent.
Crescent. And I noticed that there is a pattern of older houses being removed and newer houses comparable to this being built. And you may ask yourself, well, why doesn't the builder just put something in there that's smaller? Or why doesn't somebody build something that comports with the ordinance? And I think what you have to really ask yourself is, is the overall improvement that this particular applicant is submitting for your consideration? Because this is just the, this is the proposal. It's either yes or a no on this proposal, and I would submit to you that when you examine this proposal, and you say to yourself, I'm looking at what's there now, and I am considering what is proposed in this application, I would suggest to you that the very purposes of the state municipal land use law are being furthered, because you're enhancing the desirable visual environment. You're creating a situation where you're eliminating three non-conformities: building coverage, uh, the front yard setback, and likewise, a, uh, side yard combined. And you know, when I was speaking to Mr. Steck before the meeting, he and I were discussing, as you're driving down, uh, the street, which, what strikes you most as you're driving down the street when you look at a house? Number one is the setback, because the more, the closer it is to the front property line, the more imposing it is. Secondly is the height, both in stories and feet. So as you pass this house, should the board approve it, and it gets constructed, you would see what appears to be a house that fully conforms. Nobody's gonna be able to look at this and say, this house looks bigger than anything else, or it looks bigger than what would be otherwise the lot lines. You'll never be able to see the lot lines. Plus, the setback improvement, the building coverage deduction, now we're going from a non-conforming building coverage to a conforming building coverage, and the overall aesthetic enhancement of the site, I believe, is a benefit to the neighborhood. And I use a personal standard when I judge these applications. And my personal standard is this, if I lived on this block, how would I feel about this? And I would submit to you, the fact that really nobody's here to say, I don't like it, I don't want it, is an in- indication that it represents a substantial improvement. And I would also suggest to you that on this block, this improvement of eliminating this flat house that's been there for many years, it has this oversized garage that's really kind of obnoxious, and actually is almost as big as the house, is a vast improvement. So as the appellate division stated in the Pullen versus Planning Board of South Plainfield Township case, that you could rely on those enhancements to justify the positive criteria under the statute. And that being said, when you look at the negative criteria, how is this so imposing on the neighborhood that the purposes of the ordinance to avoid quote-unquote McMansions is being justified? Well, clearly, because of this very unique situation, where you're surrounded by woods on either side, nobody's gonna be able to perceive the deviation from the ordinance the board granted. What the public will be able to perceive is the vast, uh, aesthetic improvement of this, uh, property and the benefit. And, you know, while I appreciate the fact that there are older homes on this block, but you could see, like, the one immediately to the east, that's scheduled for the, for the demo, because clearly, that's already been vacated, and it looks like it's ready to come down. And then when you go around the sides and you see the new houses being built, they're all comparable to this, two-car garage, and, uh, you know, multiple bedrooms and the like. So, I would submit to you that this is an area that, uh, is, um, in the midst of transition, and you're gonna see more and more of these enhancements. And ultimately, I believe it represents a vast improvement to the neighborhood. So as I apply my standard, if I lived on this block, I would like to see this go forward, 'cause I think it really adds to the neighborhood, and it would enhance the property values of the people on the street. So, that's our closing. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot to ask the public if they have any comments, questions, or there's no one out there, so it doesn't really matter. But I wanted to throw that on the record. You're working.
Can I just add?
Yeah.
I understand the attic is approximately ten feet tall. Can we, um, um, ask that you do not make it a habitable space?
That's agreed.
Yeah, I think we agree to that. Yep. Okay, does anybody else wanna make a statement? I think that's it. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
To approve it.
Motion to...
Motion to approve.
With conditions.
With the conditions of, uh...
That he writes.
Okay. Mr. Ken, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
No.
Okay. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, thank you for your consideration, your time, and then we appreciate the exchange. I think it was very helpful, even though we didn't change anything, I think it was very helpful.
We gotta call the next one, right?
Call the next one, please?
The normal, right?
No, no, you gotta just call them, because they're gonna be...
Okay, Block twenty-four oh four, Lot forty-four, forty-two West Mount Drive. Application number twenty-two-four dash fifty-seven dash V, Justin Silver. Applicant seeks approval for convert attic into habitable space in violation of the following section, one seven zero ninety-six C two.
Ms. Hollis, you can, we're just stop, yeah, that's really good reading, uh... I didn't want you to stop, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you. Uh, I believe this one has, uh, is this one, uh, Ms. Hollis, is this the one that's been withdrawn? Or is this the one that's, it's being adjourned? It's just being adjourned.
Right, so I think this one...
We received, uh, to the board through you, Chairman, we, uh, Ms. Hollis received communication from the applicant asking for an adjournment of this, uh, matter. Also, through you, Chair, uh, based upon information I received from Ms. Hollis, this matter has been listed a few times, uh, and, uh, there's always the question of, uh, renotice. While there is nobody here tonight, uh, nevertheless, uh, based upon my, uh, opinion with regard to this, and it's the board's desire, but I believe as this applicant has been sitting in the queue, there is a requirement for this applicant to renotice. Uh, this has been, normally, if you're being adjourned, one, two meetings, that's one thing you can announce from the chair. But because of the number of times, it's gonna be my suggestion that the board, uh, if they, uh, allow the adjournment, but require a renotice.
Uh, I, I agree with that. Does anyone in the board object to that? There being no objections, I, the applicant needs to renotice. And then... Just the heading for the next one.
Okay, Block thirty-four hundred, Lot one, sixty-eight Spring Brook Road. Application number twenty-two-four dash fifty-eight dash V, Ramiz Jati and Sweeta Inturi.
Through you, Chair, uh, it's come to my attention, through, uh, Ms. Hollis, that this applicant is withdrawing. So there's no action. Take the applicant as withdrawn.
Okay.
So if the applicant's gonna come back, they gotta re-submit. No action needs to be taken on that one.
Motion to adjourn. There you go. Done.